Good morning and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's April 29, 2020 online special meeting. First, Ms. Costa, you can take the roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Steingasser?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Gallus?
Here.
Commissioner Tunstall?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon, I think is not here. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Spino?
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Thank you. Also, Marcela Costa, Executive Director, Ann Schuyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of Urban Design and Plan Review, are also in the meeting.
Good morning.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the special meeting agenda is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic with righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to ask us all to have a moment of silence for the country and all those In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings virtually until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business, and later in the meeting, staff will also discuss some of the technical and procedural changes we will make to running our meetings. First of all, votes will be conducted by roll call. Ms. Costa will take the roll call in each of those instances. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized by stating their name. When you're done talking, please mute and turn off your webcam. Ms. Costa and I will provide reminders throughout the meeting as needed. If you don't have any comments or questions when asked, you don't have to turn on your webcam, but you certainly are welcome to. But we do want you to turn on your webcam for voting purposes. In general, please hold your questions until the end of a presentation unless there is a particular issue or slide requiring clarification. During commission deliberations, I'll use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. I'll start with the commissioner whose agency is the applicant, and then use our normal seating order, moving from my left to right. So Commissioner Steingasser, you will generally get your thoughts in early, so be ready. If commissioners have additional comments or questions after we've gone through the round robin order, please turn on your mic or webcam and identify yourself and request to be recognized. I want to encourage everyone today to ask a few questions and provide comments so we all get used to using the system. This special meeting is really going to help us modify our procedures and make adjustments as we need to along the way. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, turn on your webcam, identify yourself, and make the motion. When you're done, then go ahead and mute the phone and turn off your webcam. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the special session, which is the second agenda item. Can we have a motion for who should run this meeting? So moved. And is that Commissioner May?
Yes, that was, sorry.
Okay, and could we have a second, please?
I second. This is Jennifer Steingasser.
Thank you. So Commissioner May has moved, and Commissioner Steingasser has seconded that I run our meeting today. Ms. Costa, can you take the vote by roll call, please? And please say yes, no, or abstain as she does that.
Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon? Commissioner McMahon? We'll return. Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Gallus?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Spino?
Yes.
Commissioner Ginsburg? All right. Commissioner McMahon, were you there?
I'm back, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So the eyes have it, and thank you, fellow commissioners, for electing me to run this meeting. We're starting a new adventure here together, and I'm glad to have all of you by my side to make sure we do this well. I'd like to now turn to Agenda Item 3, which is the Report of the Vice Chairman. First, I want to say how good it is just to see and hear everybody, the commissioners, the staff, everyone. I know that each of you has been working hard within your organizations to do what you have to do every day, and in your communities as well. But it's really great to know that all of us are continuing to be strong and healthy during these challenging times. So we need you, so please continue to take good care of yourselves and stay healthy. I also want to thank the NCPC staff, who've worked really hard to develop our virtual procedures and to bring about this meeting. They are truly a dedicated team that has demonstrated over these last few weeks how well they can work together, and I would just say they're a real bunch of pros. They know what they're doing, and we're in good hands with the team at NCPC. As you know, the commission did not hold its April 2 regular meeting, but we did act on four items by notational vote. That was conducted by email. Thank you all for electing me to continue serving as Vice Chairman in that notational vote. I also look forward to continuing to work with Commissioners Dixon and May on the Executive Committee. In fact, we have a meeting this afternoon to go over the May 7 agenda. At the April 2 meeting, the commission also approved a bylaw that explicitly allowed online meetings with guidance on public comment. So we'll be using those procedures as we go forward into the near future. Let's move now to Agenda Item 4, which is a presentation from Ms. Costa and Ms. Kim.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to spend a few minutes today going over our online meeting procedures and format that we'll be using for our online meetings. The first thing I wanted to go over is who's in the meeting. Obviously, commissioners and staff are here, but at upcoming meetings, when you join the Teams environment, there may also be applicant representatives or the testifying public. In addition, you'll need to know that we're directing the public to watch the meeting on livestream, and that generally they'll be watching it, and when the testifying public is done with their testimony, we'll also direct them to watch it on livestream, so they will no longer be in the Teams meeting environment. Mr. Gallus has gone through this, and you've all done a very lovely job in joining. Of course, finding a quiet, well-lit space is helpful. We discussed being mindful of when your mic and your webcam are on, and the idea that the applicants and the public are in the room with us before and during the meeting is important. I'll also state that the chat feature should only be used for technical and procedural issues, not for general comments. Part of this is that whatever you put in the chat room is available to the public, it's all recorded, and of course, it could be foible. Commissioner Gallus has gone through requests for recognition and speaking. I'll just remind everyone that it's really important to state your name each time you speak, just to help not only our court reporter, but those on the meeting to know who's making the comment. One thing for the upcoming meetings, and potentially for the next May 7 meeting, if we have significant public testimony, and for example, on May 7, we have one item that already has 10 speakers signed up, you may receive more than one invitation. So an invitation would come into two Team sessions, one starting, opening at 12:45, and a second one for a later time. This is to help us effectively manage the number of people in the online meeting, and when it is time to exit the first session and enter the second session, I would tell you that, and we'd take a short break. Everyone would exit this Team session and join the second session. When you join that second session, the applicant, staff, and others that are there for the remaining agenda items will already be present. We've already successfully gone through voting, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. I will say, if you find that you're interested in making an amendment, and you know this prior to the meeting, if you could let me know, I would create a slide to display the amendment, so making it easier for all of us to see what's being proposed. Otherwise, if an amendment comes up on the fly, NCPC staff will restate, and if necessary, help craft amendments as needed. We've already gone through this. When you enter the online meeting, you will be in a lobby area, and then we'll let you in, and you'll check in with NCPC staff. If you have any IT issues, we can help you out there. And we've already gone through roll call and voting, and during our regular meetings, we will hold our reports and the consent calendar, just like we do during a regular meeting. The biggest change that we'll have is with public testimony. Public testimony is going to be moved to the beginning of the agenda item. We're doing this because it's a shorter wait time for the public, and it minimizes potential technical issues and disruptions during the meeting. So when you join the Teams environment, the public will be on the meeting, but they'll only be on the phone line. They will not have a video screen, you won't see them. We will use the same general procedures. We'll ask each person that's registered to speak either for three or five minutes, they'll be timed, and you may ask questions after that. To make sure you and the speakers are prepared, we will send you all of the written testimony and a list of speakers the day prior to the meeting. If there are any technical difficulties with the speakers, you not only will have that written testimony, but I will read the testimony into the record at the meeting. Once everyone that's signed up to testify has done so, they will be asked to leave the phone line and watch the meeting via livestream. So for you as commissioners, what's important, I think, to keep in mind is that if you have questions, it's important to ask them during that testimony window, because once testimony is done, those parties will leave the line. And also, keep in mind that you'll still have coming up the staff presentation and the applicant who will be available to answer questions. So when you are thinking about the questions you want to ask, keep in mind whether or not they would be more appropriately answered by the staff or the applicant. So following public testimony, we will have staff and applicant presentations. The one thing that I'll note is that as we load up the presentations, sometimes based on not only the presenter's bandwidth, but how you are receiving the information, there may be a little bit of delay. So if you don't see the presentation up on your screen, make sure you say something, and we'll wait a few minutes to make sure everybody's got the presentation up and on the screen. Generally, if you can, hold your questions until the end of the presentation, although if it's timely, you know, if the right slide is up there, please feel free to ask those I've noted that we will send you some extra info on the Wednesday before the meeting. That will include an annotated agenda with the speaker lists and reminders of these procedural changes. So for example, we'll remind you that the public testimony is happening at the beginning of certain agenda items. We'll provide the public testimony in writing and any exhibits. We also will upload the actual staff PowerPoints to your commission portal where you get your meeting materials. So if for any reason at all you have trouble with the video part of these meetings, you can still join on the phone line and flip through the PowerPoints as staff goes through. One thing I'll say, and you might be trying this out right now, is this is a great opportunity to figure out how you're going to manage your meeting materials and the virtual meeting. So if you have a chance to either have two screens or two devices, that can be a good way to see those, or there's always the tried and true method of printing out the reports. So just a few last things. If you do need to leave the meeting, please announce this, so I can capture that. If another alternate is taking your place, they should announce themselves. If at any point in time you have any technology trouble, our IT folks are standing by, waiting to help you. And as we move through, we may have a couple of these online meetings. It's hard to predict. Please let us know, me or Commissioner Gallus. Let us know how this is working for you, if you have any suggestions to improve the format. And we also anticipate that all of the platforms, including Teams, are bringing new features online, so we'll probably have some new things to share with you as we continue with these meetings. Now I'm going to turn it over to Grace Kim with our IT team, who'll talk you through a few technical issues.
Thank you, Julia. I'm just going to... Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Grace Kim, and I am a member of the NCPC IT team. I'm here today to present a few key reminders to minimize potential technical issues during the virtual meetings. So first, we'd like to recommend that you use your microphone and speakers from your computer. However, if you experience a poor audio connection, you can connect from the conference phone line. That conference line information is provided in the meeting invite. And please make sure you turn off your computer, microphone, and speakers if you choose to use your phone. In the Teams environment, the host does not have the ability to unmute participants, so please remember to unmute yourself and turn your camera on before speaking. The chat feature in Teams should only be used to report technical and procedural issues. And finally, please do not admit other callers into the meeting. You may see a notification in Teams that other participants are waiting in the lobby to be admitted. Please ignore these notices and do not admit other callers into the meeting. Meeting control bar appears in the bottom center of your meeting screen. You can hover your cursor in the bottom center of your screen to make the control bar appear. The figure here shows you the control bar. The video camera will turn your webcam on and off. The microphone will allow you to mute and unmute yourself. The shared desktop feature will only be used by the presenter, so I'll skip that one. The More Actions button, which is the one with the three dots, will open another window, and that window will include some options such as the full screen and the blur your background. Full screen will be helpful to see the presentations in the larger window. The Blur Your Background feature does not work for iPad users or anyone who may connect from the web. And the rest are the Show Chat, the Show Attendees, and then the big red button here is to how you would hang up or end a session. Joining multiple sessions, Julia mentioned that the May Commission meeting may be split into two sessions. What that means is you will receive two meeting invites, as shown in this figure here. They will appear sequentially, so if we have two sessions for the May Commission meeting, you'll see Session 1 appear first, and then right after that, you'll see Session 2. To join the meetings, please click on the "Join Your Microsoft Teams Meeting" link that appears in your email client. So if you're using Outlook or Gmail, please make sure you go to your email client to click on those links, and not from the calendar in your Teams app. We found that there's some technical difficulties if you do navigate to your Teams app calendar. Timing the next session, staff are likely to start the Teams meeting for the next session before the current session ends, so please make sure you wait till the secretary instructs you to join the next session. And don't forget to hang up the first session before you join the next one. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. The NCPC IT team is available to provide support prior to and during the meetings. Our contact information is provided here, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Costa and Ms. Kim for a very thorough outline of our meeting procedures. I've really thought this through, and what we'd like to do now is ask commissioners if there are any questions or comments, starting with Commissioners on my left. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Steingasser. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Commissioner McMahon?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Perhaps this was already stated, but the presentation that we just saw, is that available to us somewhere?
Yes, we didn't send out that presentation, but I'm happy to send the slides out to the commission.
Thanks.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Commissioner Argo?
No questions.
Commissioner White?
No questions, but my compliments, very well done, very clear.
I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
No questions. Thank you.
I don't know if Commissioner Dixon has joined. Doesn't sound like it. Commissioner Cash?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spino?
No questions. Thank you.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
I don't have any questions. I just apologize in advance that I'm sharing 900 square feet with a kid and a husband, so the quiet part is the part that's going to be hardest for me. Thanks.
You're doing great. I think a lot of us are juggling a lot of adjustments in the way we're having to coexist these days, so we applaud you for juggling in such an effective way. So with that, I'd like to turn to Agenda Item 5, which is going to be an information presentation by Mr. Carlton Hart on NCPC's Antenna Guidelines Initiative. Mr. Hart?
Good morning. Good morning, all. So over the past 18 months, NCPC staff has been reviewing the antenna guidelines and identifying issues in order to update the document. Antennas have very different purposes. Most of us rely on them as an integral part of our nation's telecommunications network, especially as we've had recently to physically distance ourselves and rely on these networks while we work from our homes. If you've had intermittent service or have had calls drop recently, you know how vitally important it is to have a robust network of antennas. The first guidelines that the commission adopted were in 1988. In the mid to late 1990s, a commission task force looked at radio frequency safety effects on humans and aesthetic concerns to update these 1988 guidelines. These changes were finally adopted by the commission in 2001, and these are the most recent guidelines that we have that we are looking to update. The purpose of the guidelines is to protect the skyline, historic resources, and scenic character of the nation's capital, and provide a safe environment for employees, visitors, and residents. Over time, there have been significant advances in technology, in addition to an increased demand for multiple types of telecommunications infrastructure. This has led us to consider changes to these guidelines. So these revisions under consideration will address some longstanding issues that both applicants and staff have identified over the years. These issues are outlined here. The first is that guidelines don't adequately discuss all of the existing types of antennas. And what we really mean by this is that small cells and temporary antennas are not included in the existing guidelines. Criteria for the second issue is that we have design criteria for evaluating antenna installations. They need to change to adequately address things like location, color, cumulative effects, or priority areas. And finally, the last change under discussion is the review process, as it does not currently include temporary or small cell antennas. And these have varying installation timeframes. So over the past two decades, staff has reviewed and consulted on many different antennas, and utilizing this experience, identified three types of antennas: permanent antennas, temporary ones, and small cells. The existing guidelines only really address one type, which are the permanent antennas, so they'll need to be expanded to include all of the types. So the first type, permanent antennas, are either attached to a freestanding tower or mast, or they're attached to a sled or penthouse on the roof of a federal building. These are the most common submissions to the commission, and will typically be approved for either five or 10 years. While many of the antennas the commission approves are to enhance the public telecommunications network, others are used for secure communications by one or more federal agencies. So next, we get to temporary antennas. These are, as the name suggests, different from the permanent antennas in one main way. They are only intended to enhance the local cell network when large crowds are anticipated for a specific event. These events could be the inauguration, First Amendment demonstrations, festivals, and cultural events, to name a few. You may be aware of them because you've seen the one here that's shown on the screen or something like it at an event that you've attended. This image on the screen is actually called a "cell on wheels," also referred to as a "cow." Because of the short duration that they will be installed, typically only a few days to a week or two, staff is not able to review them, since this is much shorter than the commission review cycle. And we're looking at having the definition for temporary antennas be anything installed And we're looking at having the definition for temporary antennas be anything installed for less than 30 days. So finally, we get to small cells. And you're probably fairly familiar with these because of the review the commission went through over the last two years and because they are more frequently in the news as this network is being deployed across the nation by multiple service providers. And they are defined as being small, low-powered cell antennas that can be attached to existing streetlight poles or placed on new poles. These are the main infrastructure of when the cell providers are deploying the fifth-generation or 5G networks. While staff is recommending, is looking to recommend that the commission include them in the guidelines, staff notes that small cells that will be deployed on DC rights-of-ways will be regulated by the district government and not by NCPC. The only small cells that NCPC will review will be those on federal property. So the second issue that we've identified pertains to the design criteria. Staff use these design criteria to base our recommendations to the commission. These design criteria do not appropriately address a number of issues, and you see them here. And I think the main issue that we're looking to address is really how to deal with the visibility of antennas on rooftops. This is a key issue since NCPC is an approval authority for projects within DC, and we seek to protect views of the national capital as well as protecting historic resources. There are some other minor changes with regard to small cells and lighting and safety, and I'll discuss those in upcoming slides. And so while we're also considering several, excuse me, we're also considering several small changes, such as removing one criterion, which is related to mast and tower materials, as it is no longer relevant. And then finally, renaming one category because the, excuse me, renaming the categories because the existing ones are fairly vague and they need to be clarified. So reviewing the list of antenna projects submitted to the commission over the last two years, it's clear that the rooftop antennas are the primary type of project that's submitted for review. Sometimes the antenna projects blend in well, and they're really not that noticeable. There are some antennas that are shown here on this slide, and they are actually pretty good. You can see how this, on this building, they're painted a color that will match with the building itself and placed in a location to blend in with the existing architecture. There are also screens that have been used to camouflage antennas. And you'll see the image here on the right, and then a diagram showing this on the left, just to show that the antennas are kind of behind a screen on these two towers. But unfortunately, while the screens may work in some instances, they don't always work in all instances, and so they're not always effective. And then there are antennas that may be visible, and staff uses the design criteria to help minimize the impacts of the views on the design, looking to push them back, or sometimes use existing infrastructure or existing mechanical equipment on the top to help to shield them. Staff has identified a few challenges regarding rooftop antennas, and I'll go into those in an upcoming slide. So while the new criteria can be adjusted to address most of the visibility concerns, these two challenges, which are shown here, will require some additional thought and discussion. And I'll kind of lay them out here. The first challenge is identifying if there are priority view sheds to be protected. And this is kind of a larger-scale concern, looking at vistas down main streets or from prominent areas such as the National Mall. The second challenge is understanding the cumulative visual impacts of multiple service providers with several antennas on a single building. This is a concern on the individual building level. So as you're looking at the building, how is the addition of antennas impacting that view? So where are these priority areas, these priority views that we can look to be protected? One possibility that we could use is to use the same areas that were identified in the Urban Design Streetscape and Lighting Framework Plan. These areas are shown on the slide here, and were first presented to the commission a few months ago. While there were different concerns being raised here, there is some overlap, and it may be better to use something like this to guide us. There are a number of questions that come up as well, such as should there be additional criteria added to protect more prominent areas in these priority areas that are shown here? And are there other ways to ensure these areas are protected? And I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. Then we get to the cumulative impacts. This is the kind of individual building-level impacts. And there are a couple of questions that come to mind here. The first is that is there a tipping point when there are really too many rooftop antennas? And how can we, how is this determined? Is there a rooftop-wide strategy for addressing this concern? And maybe it is adding in screens for either a penthouse area so that the antennas can be behind that, or some other alternative. And also, what is, the last question here, what is the impact on cell service if there are limits to cellular antennas on certain buildings? The building plan that's shown here has three service providers identified on it. They're different colors. But in the future, there may be additional providers requesting to place their antennas on this roof. And how is that handled? And if we look to limit the number of providers on a roof, will cellphone service be impacted by that? And we would appreciate your thoughts on these questions. As I noted earlier, there were a few small changes to the things like small cells, lighting, and screening with regard to the design criteria. For small cells, they were not included in the criteria because, of course, they were newer technology. They weren't around in 2001. And we're thinking that this could be added to the ground-level antenna criteria. With regard to lighting, illumination is allowed on antennas as required by federal regulations. What we're looking to only add is that sometimes it may be necessary to have some limited lighting for technicians to be able to access utility cabinets or antennas when the lighting conditions are poor, let's say it's early in the day or late at night. With regard to screening and safety fencing, this is just an issue of clarity. The existing criteria is somewhat confusing because it describes screening as necessary for both providing safety to the public by prohibiting access and as a method to reduce visibility of the antennas on top of a building. Staff believes that it's important to clarify that safety fencing would be used to help prohibit public access to antennas, while screening would be used to reduce the visibility of antennas. And that's just kind of parsing those two issues out. So we then get to the third and final issue, which pertains to the review process. There are four main points here. Small cells, as I've noted earlier, they're actually not included in the process or in the document from 2001, and they really need to be added. Noting again that the cell antennas, small cell antennas and related infrastructure on district right-of-ways should be, will be regulated by the district government, but small cells that are on federal installations would be reviewed by the commission as, along with, using our existing antenna procedures. With regard to temporary antennas, staff would recommend that temporary antennas not require NCPC review. And these would be antennas that are in place less than 30 days. However, we would think that it would be helpful to have a notification letter submitted to the commission, to staff, describing the project, its location, duration that it'll be up, and when it would be installed and removed, just so we have a way to kind of track it. And finally, the changes in the review process for delegations and review exceptions. This is more of a technical thing for staff. Currently, we can only delegate, or the commission can only delegate, projects that are receive-only antennas. And the same with review exceptions. We're looking to have actually both send and receive antennas. So it's, like I said, a technical change, but it's one that we think it would be helpful to have at this juncture. So in summary, while there are a few changes under consideration, identifying different antenna types, making criteria for evaluating installations clearer, and also making some changes to the current review process. There are a few challenges that staff has identified regarding priority view sheds and cumulative impacts of antennas on rooftops. We are asking a few questions, as you noted on the previous slide. And we'd like to see if we can get some input from the commission on how we can address these challenges. With regard to the priority view sheds, it's really where are these priority areas that we'd like to protect? And maybe there needs to be additional criteria to protect these more prominent areas. And with regard to cumulative impacts, is there a tipping point where there are too many antennas on a roof? And maybe there could be impacts on cell service, cellphone service, if antennas are limited on a particular building. And with that, we get to the timeline. We're doing the information presentation, of course, in April, and look to bring the draft antenna guidelines to the commission for release for public comment in June-July timeframe of this year, and then have the antenna guidelines for final adoption in September-October of this year. And with that, I will end my presentation and am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your informative presentation, Mr. Hart. I'd like to, at this time, do a round robin to ask the commissioners if they have any questions. So let's start with Commissioner Steingasser, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hart. That was really a very informative presentation. I want to voice my support for your idea of requesting a letter of notification for temporary antennas because in our experience, that sometimes they start out as temporary, and then they get forgotten. So having an idea of who controls them and at least how to reach out to the operator is important. And regarding the view sheds, could we go back to the very last slide where it's kind of, there was a, I'm sorry, there was a bit of an elevational photo, photograph of the view sheds? Yeah, right there.
Is this what you're looking at?
That one. That's a good example. I think when we start looking at view sheds, thinking about where the view is being taken, at what elevation, like from the street level, you know, having them set back is really important. And, you know, whether it's a one-to-one setback or a two-to-one setback so that there's a clear shot, or whether, in some cases like this, seems to be taken from the Capitol building itself, looking out. And I think that's going to be important as we look at those, defining the perspective and elevation of the view sheds. That's all I, that's all the comments I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. And how about Commissioner McMahon? Any comments or questions?
I'm not going to turn the camera on because the last time I did, I got kicked out of the meeting, so I'll have to work on that in the future. But no problem. Good presentation. You've raised some key issues. I suspect there'll be a challenge trying to regulate cell phones on trailers for special events, although I think AT&amp;T and all that, we use them here at the Pentagon from time to time. I'll see how that plays out. Certainly, the other issues you raise need addressing, and I can support those. I also appreciate that the sample you used of a well-screened cellphone antenna installation was one I'm quite familiar with. Other than that, I look forward to seeing the staff question southpaws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner May?
Yes, I have a couple of questions or comments. First is with regard to the temporary antennas. You don't state it specifically, but I assume that when you talk about temporaries, you're talking about ones on parkland or other public space because you only mention, the only ground installations you mention are in public rights-of-way. Yeah. Yes, they would be. But sometimes we actually get some temporary antennas that are proposed on buildings. Yes, and that's fine, and that's included. But I think, you know, the very frequent use that we see is in parkland, and I assume that those will be included even though that was not explicit in your comment. I do have a concern about the temporary notifications because I do not believe that it will be an easy task. It seems like it's an easy task, send us a letter, let us know when it's happening. But with the number of large events that we have on the Mall and sometimes other places, making sure that, you know, in addition to the million other details that you have to deal with in planning a special event, that, you know, we've got to send a letter to NCPC or, you know, the service provider does. I mean, there are many different people involved in these things. It's not just, it's not us, a lot of the time, instigating the event. So I would think that, you know, it's okay to do a notification, but I think that if it's a notification associated with a one- or two- or three-day event, that maybe you don't need to do it. Because it's really, you know, it's just one more thing that I don't think we need to do. You know, we roll them in, we hook them up, and they roll away. It's not like some of the other ones where it goes in for, you know, 20 days or something like that. So I think that should be an exception, and I will continue to advocate for that. I appreciate the comment on it, and it is, I think that's also why we wanted to have this discussion because while we understand that there may be, while we understand that there may be some groupings that we can kind of, that we can use, like if you're doing it on, if you're putting one on a building, that kind of makes sense to me. It is harder for us to know the, how, the difficulties that you all may have as you're actually trying to install these and the permitting and other processes that you all will have to go through for it. So it's helpful for us to understand this, and it is possible to, we can think about, maybe there is some sort of exception that we look for. It really was trying to find ways so that we could be aware that these things were going up, and maybe there's a different form to do that. And it just seems like the notification letter was a way in which to do that. But we can, you know, continue to discuss that. Okay. Yeah, thanks. I'm going to advocate against having to do that for a lot of the large, very short-term events that we have on the Mall and in similar places because it just seems like it's another detail that we don't need. There's not really any protection that's provided by doing that. I could see it if it's going to be up there for 20 days, you want to know what's going on. But if it's up for one or two or three days, I don't think it's necessary. The second thing is that when it comes to how we, you know, the guidelines and what we try to put in place to make sure that antennas, rooftop antennas in particular, are as invisible as possible, I think that it's important to be thinking creatively about that. And this is probably more applicable when it comes to new construction. But it is possible to actually integrate the antennas into the design of the building. And the only example I can think of off the top of my head is a district building, the Unified Communication Center, where they integrated a number of antennas.
Unified Communication Center, where they integrated a number of antennas along the perimeter of the building and it's actually integrated into the design. I don't know if that's, whether it still looks the way it was originally designed, but the notion of actually trying to integrate this technology into the design of the building or design of the rooftop, I think is actually, could be a fruitful path and more than just, you know, better than just sort of trying to put a blanket over it and hide it. Because sometimes those screening devices wind up being very obvious and ugly themselves. Then the last thing I would mention is that when it comes to, I think there was a statement in your, I don't know if it was in the presentation, but I know it was in the write-up received in advance, that there would be a list of exceptions that would be amended to include replacements or renewals when there are replacements in kind or renewal of an existing antenna. And I would just want to say I do not think that that should be an exception or an automatic. Now, maybe there are some circumstances where that's fine, but if we're going to institute new guidelines and we have stuff that was put in place under the old guidelines and it's ugly or highly visible, yet somehow managed to pass muster, I think we should revisit that rather than simply granted a renewal by exception. So I think we have to look at that with a finer eye.
Okay.
That's it for my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner May, can I ask you a question about that last point? Particularly where we were seeing the sort of cumulative effect of some of these things where maybe we approved them individually, but now we see them in total and we see that some of the images that were being shown, is that partly what's on your mind too with that comment?
I wasn't thinking about that specifically, but that certainly makes a lot of sense. You know, the first antenna may not be so bad, but you know, by the 10th one, the whole rooftop is being junked up. So I would also say, I mean, this is unrelated, but I was reminded of what, of Commissioner Steingasser's comment having to do with where you're taking the views from. And I think that one of the things that has changed in the city in the last few years is the greater use of rooftops as private, public space, as it were, rooftop decks and gardens and things like that. And the amount of junk that's getting piled on the roof is being reduced as building owners are trying to make better use of their buildings. And so I think that we should be, we should be thinking expansively about what it looks like and not just say, well, it's setback one-to-one, it's okay. You know, you can see them from other rooftops. Maybe we should be paying attention to the views from rooftops since there are a lot of people on top of them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner May. Next, Commissioner Argo, any comments or questions?
Hi there. I just had, I just had a couple of comments, very thoughtful comments, Commissioner May, thank you. Anything, most of the things I was thinking of, you mentioned. When you're, there's another word that, in fact, the words you used, the adjectives you used, you used ugly, highly visible, all of that. One of the things that comes to mind is to think about how they're, which may be the same thing in some people's minds, how they're intrusive or just for the kinds of view sheds that we might be trying to protect in some way. I completely support, and this comes from some experience, though it is long dated at this point, the concept of exploring how we can do a better job of ensuring that some of these concepts are integrated into building design. And I'm not quite sure the best way to do that, but I think it, you know, there's probably a number of ways if there's a comprehensive approach to that. Thanks for the chance to comment and thanks for the comprehensive presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. It would seem that the integration within the building is going to need to offer some flexibility as the technologies change, as we've seen with antenna technology over time. And so having flexibility built into those building facades or into the rooftops may be part of that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner White from Chicago, any comments or questions?
Hello there. Actually Houston now, but Chicago's always in my heart, Tom.
Sorry, thank you, you're right.
No, that's okay. I appreciate everyone's comments and I was thinking about the temporary antenna situation as well and agree with Commissioner May that having them for special events may be a little much since special events are so heavily permitted already and they are truly temporary. But I did think about how would we monitor that situation and is that built in? If we get a letter, are we going to go out in 30 days and make sure that antenna is removed? Because it seems to me that would be a big issue if people put that up and then just leave it there until, you know, they're told to move it. So that would be something to think about. And I appreciated too the integration into building design and the building that was referenced, the district building. It would, it would be great to put in some examples of successful integration of antennas. I thought that was a really great idea and I'd love to see an image of that building. But, you know, otherwise, I concur with all the comments and I think this is a real thoughtful approach to trying to reduce visual clutter because that's what it is. So thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Commissioner Tunstall-Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hart, for the presentation. It was very timely. As you may or may not be aware, GSA is just sort of in the tail end of completing a cumulative review of our antenna program. We currently, you know, lease face on the top of our buildings and it's revenue that comes in. The biggest benefactors of that are our historic buildings. The money goes into a fund that we use to restore buildings that can't compete, frankly, from a reinvestment perspective with some of our more modern buildings. So it's a very valuable program to us, however, we have had a number of challenges. Many of them are the same ones that you all have identified. The most key among them is the cumulative impacts. And one of the big challenges there is how do we, when we're dealing with applications from various carriers, how do we assess the cumulative impacts and whose responsibility is that? We've tried to put it back to the carriers and they say, well, wait a minute, we can't know what carrier X is doing. And so then it comes back to the agency and we're trying to, we really are grappling with how to deal with that, both from a NEPA perspective, a view shed perspective. And so we would really welcome a conversation with staff and other impacted agencies about how they are managing that because it is a challenge. And then the last thing I'd like to add is the view sheds will be interesting as well as the, as you start to consider the impact of changes on cell service because what we've found, our most popular antenna sites are the most prominent. The Labor Building and HHS right off the Mall are very, very, they're full, right? Because that's where people want to be, particularly if there's large events. So I think there may, you also want to think through the repercussions. If you push them off the roofs, do we end up with more ground level or more temporary antennas? So it's just a bigger picture to think through, I think. And I, we're welcomed the opportunity to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash, any comments or questions? Commissioner Cash, are you there?
Sorry Chairman, I have no questions at this time. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Spino.
No questions or comments.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Sorry, I have no questions. Thank you for a great presentation. I learned a lot.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to maybe follow up a little bit with a couple of points. I agree it was a very thoughtful presentation and asking a lot of important questions that we grapple with when we're asked to review and approve these applications. And, you know, being able to think through strategically in anticipation, I think it'll help building owners and people who are making these decisions to understand a more holistic approach. I think you suggested, Mr. Hart, in your report, that there might be a need for a master plan on the rooftop, much like you would do a landscape plan on the ground plane or something like that. And where these used to be thought of as only utilitarian spaces, we were hearing from Commissioners about how rooftops are being more valued as well in terms of their uses and so forth and then the cumulative effect on how we're seeing it. The biggest thing that we are going to be facing probably in the next several months ahead as a commission will be when we see the small cell pole design coming back and how that's going to be interacting with the ground plane versus the rooftops. And so I know there's a committee that had set out to do some design work and I don't know if there's any update on that that you could share with us today about where that process is.
Yeah, the, as you noted, there has been a meeting, a group that's been meeting. DDOT has been kind of spearheading this. They have met with the small cell providers as well as us, CFA, Officer Planning and SHIPO, over the summer and last, last summer and last fall. The designs have not been finalized yet and I think that you all are aware that the, their approach really is to look at kind of a contemporary infrastructure and they'll have a common And, and they're looking to really minimize kind of the visual impact on the streetscape. DDOT is still working on this, on this issue and hopefully we will get something from them soon on what that design will eventually look like. I don't know if Diane Sullivan may have some further insight on that as well.
Hi, Tom. Yes, this is Diane Sullivan. I'm the Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Program at NCPC. We, in talking with the district, small cell is proceeding for, right now, installations on wood poles, which are largely those in alleys and residential areas that are not as visible. What has happened is the district has been looking at the engineering requirements for attachments to the poles that are more in the public right-of-way and they've determined that it needs further study. So while there was a big focus on the design last year, they're setting, they're sort of stopping that at the, at the time to actually look at the engineering requirements before that proceeds. So they're doing some pilot projects for testing purposes right now. So it may be a little while longer before we actually see the designs come back. I think they want to just make sure that, you know, they understand the engineering correctly before even pursuing this even further. So I, we see that as a good thing.
We agree, I think. And we can probably all imagine that this technology is going to continue to evolve and get smaller and hopefully less obtrusive in terms of the way it populates our urban fabric.
That's right.
So thank you, we're glad to hear that. So at this, oh, I do want to, since Commissioner Dixon is not on, he did contact me a few weeks ago to talk about small cell technology. I just want to put it out there, don't need to discuss it today, but some concerns he was receiving from stakeholders and so forth had to do with the kind of safety issues associated with small cell technology as well. And apparently there have been some recent articles about that. And so just want to also sort of put that on the radar as something that we should be asking questions about associated with our new guidelines. Well, with that, I want to ask if there are any other follow-up questions from any of the Commissioners and if you, if you do want to follow up, please remember to identify yourself before speaking and we, it looks like Commissioner Cash would like to add We don't have your microphone.
No, Mr. Chairman, I was just putting my video up because I was done with the task and could kind of get back to here, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this point? All right, well, this concludes what I would consider to be a pretty successful first virtual meeting for our April 29 special meeting. I really want to thank everyone who adjusted schedules and so forth to participate in this. We really saw this as an important way to engage amongst us before our formal meeting on May 7, which will, as Ms. Costa pointed out, have a lot of testimony from citizens and outside parties. And so we're kind of growing up. We just went through grade school and maybe on, on May 7, we'll be going to high school, we'll graduate a little bit, we hope. But hopefully these procedures seemed comfortable enough. It's certainly not as spontaneous as we, we might all like, but we also have to consider that certain protocols have to be maintained so that we can ensure that these meetings are properly conducted and official in the business that we're here to do. So really want to thank, first of all, the staff and the NCPC team who pulled all this together. I also want to thank all the Commissioners for your participation in this and testing earlier in the week and for making the time today to be able to do this. So with that, I think this concludes our meeting. The commission's next regular scheduled meeting is May 7, 2020. There's information on www.ncpc.gov on how to review or participate in that meeting. And Commissioners, as you exit the meeting, please remember to hit the red bar on your toolbar screen to disconnect your phone and connection through that icon. So if there's no other business, this special meeting is now adjourned. So thank you very much and have a pleasant rest of your day.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.